Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Post Agenda Meeting. Today is Monday, November 7th, 2021. This is a post-agenda discussing the Plan for Peace and the Group Violence Initiative. We are grateful to be joined with us today with two other councilpeople other than myself, Councilman Ricky Burgess, we are joined by Councilman Bobby Wilson and Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle. Our first, we do have a number of invited guests, but our first group inviting guest are Director David Jones, Assistant Director Community Affairs of Pittsburgh Department of Public Safety. Jay Gilmer from the Stop the Violence Coordinator, again from Public Safety. Mr. Tilly Thompson, Director Violence Prevention Initiative at Operation Better Block. We have Cornell Jones, who is, I'm not sure your exact title, but I think it's close to being Director of GVI or Coordinator of GVI. And then at the end of the table, we have Reverend Glenn Gleason, who is the Executive Director of the Community Cares and the Lead on the Reach Team, which is the Group Violence Outreach Workers. And so the first couple of things will be from council to sort of go over why we're here. I'll talk a little bit, then Councilman Lavelle will talk a little bit about our our history and sort of councils and our engagement in this work. And then we'll turn it over to Director Jones to give his presentation in that order. I have been involved in this work as a member of council almost from the very, well, really from the very beginning because I started looking at the Boston Miracle and the Ten Point Coalition Church Movement out of Boston prior to becoming a councilmember. Actually, I knew Jay Gilmer before this moment and we began to have those conversations before becoming a councilmember. After becoming a councilmember, I was fortunate enough to be able to have direct conversations and meetings with David Kennedy, John J. College, and along with the former mayor Luke Ravenstall, began to design and together co-initiate the Pittsburgh Initiative to Reduce Crime. That was the name then, named after the Cincinnati's model, using ceasefire or focus deterrent. All those are the same same models. Over time, that name got changed to GVI, which is the modern name Group Violence Initiative, which still uses focus deterrents. It's a different name, but the model is still the same. Along with that, over the years, we added other things such as Stop Shot Spotted, which is Gunshot to Texas System, various training for the police, Maryland Ethology Assessment Model. We were one of the first cities in the national initiatives to reduce crime and build community trust, National Initiative to Build Community Trust, I think is the name of it was. Where we did the three major components of police training in terms of implicit bias and racial reconciliation and procedural justice. And so on down to the current Plan for Peace and its component parts, we've been hopefully a cheerleader and a part. Last but not least, and maybe this will be maybe, I guess I was gonna say one of my last times to talk about it, but you know, my own personal, most, most everybody in the room probably knows my own personal experience with gun violence, you know, that my my aunt was murdered and my, my mother had a nervous breakdown almost 40 years ago because of that shooting of her sister. And she never recovered from that. My mother had a serious mental illness for 30 years after that shooting. My mother-in-law was shot and killed in her place of business. My cousins have been shot and killed, three or four church members shot and killed. My grandfather, wife's grandfather was shot and killed. My wife's father was shot. Her brother-in-law, my brother-in-law, my wife's brother committed a homicide and died after 27 years of incarceration. The son that I raised, one of my sons is actually my nephew, who was my brother's son. And we raised him because his father has spent almost all of his life in the penitentiary. And so this issue is not foreign to me. It is not a matter of convenience or of choice. I ran for council explicitly to reduce violence and to learn how to do it. And I think we have learned how to do it and history shows that we did do it when be prior to the pandemic and its devastating effects. We start off with no money. Then we started off, I think our first grant was $150,000. I think that's what the number was back when we first started this daily, something like that. With Kennedy, I think it was $150,000 and council looked at me like I was crazy. And then it mushroomed to a whopping, what, 350?
First was actually 75,000.
35,000 and then 150, then the 350. And we, we did this on less than a shoestring budget with a skeptical council and a skeptical skeptic community really of not understanding this work. You know, the, 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 the knee-jerk reaction is always to to have more police, right? If crime goes up, we need more police. If crime goes down, we work, let's get more police. And to change the narrative, where we were actually saying that the deaths of black and brown people, specifically black and brown men, made a difference and that we would put money into their lives. And I'm proud to stand with our current mayor and Councilman Lavelle and council. We've earmarked millions of dollars now for a comprehensive program for the first time in the city's history. We have finally a comprehensive program and I see the presence of our, our excellent Public Safety Director and because of his leadership, we have now this, this comprehensive approach to violence production a far cry from where we started. And I'm, I, as I'm older now, and I say this both publicly and privately, I really understand my role. My role is a cheerleader and a witness of what God has done. This has been a work of God to show that these young people matter and that we have put the weight of our city and the resources of our city behind this effort. And if given time, because there will always be those, of course, who will not want to invest money in the black and brown children. None, even in the past, these, these, these initiatives did not pass unanimously. There was contention on council, you know, of why I put this money into prevention and not just put the money in police. There will always be these naysayers. And I asked, and I'm gonna stop with this, but this is, I say this all the time. Tell me the value of the life of a young man or woman. You tell me their value, right? So just tell me the number, so I'll know, right? So how much is too much to save one life is if it's, just let me know. And if we can save hundreds of lives, what's, you know, what's, how much money, for me, there is no value on the quality of life of a kid. Every kid, every young person, every adult has unlimited potential and talent and it's a loss to the world. And so I, I'm of the belief that we spend whatever is necessary. Because at the end of the day, brick and mortar is just brick and mortar. But we need to make kids and young people and their families and at-risk families the heart of our work in our city and, and we've been able to do that. So with that long sort of historical overview of sort of how we've gotten here over the last close to 15 years, I'll pass it up to my, my running partner, my partner, I won't say partner and crab, but my partner in the work, Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle.
Thank you Reverend. I've been asked to give a couple of words about our work with Cities United. And as Reverend Burgess has already documented, this has been a long-running effort to get to where we are today. But it's also worth noting that this work, specifically Cities United, goes back many, many years. I don't recall when the, that year, I think it was somewhere around 2012 or so, when Cities United was founded by a number of mayors across our country that had determined that they had seen too many they've seen too many lives lost. And specifically, they were also focused on black men and black boys and the lives that they had lost. And so they founded Cities United to look at a sort of comprehensive approach to how to reduce gun violence. And part of what they created was the Cities United Roadmap Academy. And it's worth noting, and I'm gonna read exactly what it is for the record, but it's worth noting that we participated in that academy many, many years ago. I don't recall all of who was with it, but I know Tali participated, I believe Josiah, when he was with my brother's keeper, thank you. Created by our former president Barack Obama, when he was with them, they participated in that academy. And just for the record, that academy exists to support a national network of mayors, young leaders and other stakeholders committed to reducing the epidemic of homicides and shootings among young black men and boys ages 14 to 24 by 50%. In order to do that, they've created what they, this academy, which is a year-long peer-to-peer learning engagement that looks at the most comprehensive approaches. And so the work we are doing has continually built off of national models and best practices across the country. Specifically, Cities United is also focused on reimagining public safety and they've created a definition of what that means. And I'm gonna read it because I think it's pertinent to our work. Reimagining public safety means leveraging political and financial capital to invest in, to invest in solutions supported and led by community members and community-based organizations that represent and work directly with individuals most impacted by community and state violence. And the solutions that they've targeted are violence interruption, street outreach, diversion and alternative pathways, coordinated crisis response teams and collaborative public safety funding models. But they go also a step further that also saying that reimagining public safety has to also look at all the historical wrongs that have plagued our communities. And so if you're not also addressing education, if you're not also addressing all the racist practices that have put our communities in these places, that you're not having a comprehensive focus model. I say all that to say, if you look at the mayor's plan for peace, all of what is in that plan for peace is what is in this national best model. And so now that we have laid the foundation, we have all the pieces in place. We, I believe we're in a tremendous place to really begin reducing shootings and deaths that occur in our city. I'll also add that this past weekend or two weekends ago, excuse me, coming directly off of the conference from Cities United, a number of us, including Director Jones, retreted. And some of us were in a public safety breakout room. And in that breakout room, because of this work, because of the work that all of you all in this room are actually doing, the goal that we created coming out of that workout, coming out of that group was to reduce gun homicides and Reverend Grayson was there too, you can certainly chime in, was to reduce homicides by 25% next year. Because we believe so much in the plan, in the mayor's agenda and the work that all you are doing. And so with that, I do want to turn it over now to Director Jones, who can go further into the mayor's plan for peace. But I do want to commend our mayor for coming up and creating a comprehensive plan that is based on the best practices and based on the work that you all have already begun to do. Director Jones?
Thank you very much, Councilman Lavelle, to Madam President in her absence. Thank you for the pitch to further talk about the mayor's plan for peace. First, we're certainly grateful to have part of our team here today and they will be speaking on behalf. We've been doing a mighty fine job and you can tell as we go forward our data that we're certainly helping to swell the balance in our city. The Mayor's Plan for Peace is broken down into six categories. I'd just like to highlight a few. The Public Health Approach focuses on the public health and the safety of our wellbeing of all residents. Public Health draws on experience and analysis from healthcare professionals, educators and social service providers. Please understand that this does not replace or conflict with law enforcement. Right policing community allows the law enforcement to approach officers continuously. They're working together in order to create a stronger bond with residents rather than responding to when the incident occurs. Community partnerships committed to community partners, including our schools, face-based communities and community-based organizations. The GVI group was started approximately in January 1st, 2022, 11 months ago. GVI's approach is to facilitate and direct sustained engagement with a small number of group-involved individuals to prevent one act of violence, usually homicides, that's what lead to others. And we also understand that approximately 200 people in our community are the ones that are causing the majority of our violent crimes. GVI works with law enforcement, social service providers to keep our community safe, alive and free. And we also know that across the United States, a strong GVI team will reduce homicides by 30 to 60%. In conjunction, our Safer Together coordinators, our outreach focuses on strengthening relationships and partnerships and communicates between the city's public bureaus and local public safety zones to make residents safer. Our Stop the Violence Grants with Mr. Gilmore, we'll talk about in a couple of seconds. The City of Pittsburgh provides grants to community-based organizations to strengthen their capacity to provide a reduction to help with the violence. I will now pitch it to Mr. Gilmore to talk about.
Well, thank you very much and thank you for inviting me here today. It's a pleasure to be able to speak with you about the work that we've been doing over the years and especially the new things we've been doing this year because there this is an evolving field. And as Reverend Burgess spoke about earlier, we've, we've gone from the, we've been doing this for a long time and we've seen a lot of change. And it's exciting to see the new developments that we saw at the Cities United Conference, to hear, to see what other cities are doing, to see how much we do have in place. But also to see that there's a lot of, there's a lot of work left to be done. There's a lot, there's room for lots of people in this space because it's gonna take a total community effort to accomplish the objectives, the goals that have been set forth here today. I do want to talk a little bit about the work that I have been doing before I turn it over to Tyler, he'll share some of the real nitty-gritty stuff about how this really works, how effective it is. My role as Stop the Violence Coordinator is primarily to coordinate components of the strategies that involve the changing of the community narrative, involve the expansion of the capacity of all of the city to do the things we're trying to do. So the, one of those components being the Stop the Violence Community Investment Grants, which were launched in this year and which we are now actually getting the first amount of money out to community groups as we speak. First check, got their checks. And there's still another, another round of that to set of checks to go out after those groups comply with some of the requirements to get their dollars. That will, the next phase will probably come out early next year. Those grants are intended for community groups who have existing relationships with high-risk individuals of all ages. Because we, our goal is to get protective factors around those individuals. Know the relationship, this whole solving this disease, curing this disease is gonna involve relationships, people knowing people, talking to people, relating to people, influencing people and helping those who are at risk to form a different identity. Their identity, rather than being one that is going to give in to the to the, to the negative community narratives, is one that's gonna be going in some positive directions to promote the community, to build up the community, to build up, to have their own goals, of things that they're trying to do and, and understanding that the good way to get to those goals is not to be out in the streets carrying a gun around and being in conflict with, with your neighbors. All of our strategies are predicated on the fact that we, that, that there's not, it's not the entire community that is involved. It's a very small part of the community. And the more fat protective factors we can put around those small number of people, the more we can start changing those identities. We did for our this year's Community Investment Grants, we have money going to approximately 40 different organizations that are working in everything from youth development up to reentry, work with reentering populations and workforce development. We're gonna do it all again next year because there's plenty, lots of great groups doing great work in our city. And the more we can support them and begin to have them collaborate with and coordinate with each other, the more we can get our arms more around this issue and so that this disease can be cured. And that's, that's the, the role that I'm playing. We also, our Stop the Violence Newsletter, which is becoming a way for individuals out in the community to find out some of the things that are going on, some of the good things that are going on, some of the facts of what the situations are. So we don't simply rely upon what we think is the, are the facts, which oftentimes are not the real facts. So it's about putting out real facts. It's about sharing real examples of what's going on, sharing solutions, sharing resources. So the individuals who want to take advantage of them can do that. And if anyone is watching this broadcast today and knows someone that might need a protective factor, please reach out. We have it. We have them. If we can find out about something in advance, we can take care, we can do something about that. We can't stop everything, but we can get around a lot of different things. If there's someone that needs a resource, we probably have that somewhere out here too, among some of our partner groups. They're doing some spectacular work, you know, and every neighbor of our city. And there's no excuse for someone not finding it. And if they need any, need any help, just write to violence@pittsburghpa.gov and we can try to set them up with, introduce them to some services that might be able to help them or whoever they may know that may need something. And with that, I will turn it over to Tyler Thompson. Who's been another co-laborer in the work and he's longer than I've been involved. Was now the Director of Violence Prevention at Operation Better Block out in Homewood and has just been developing expertise because of, because of his knowledge as an outreach worker and as an outreach supervisor and knowing what, how challenging it is to document the work that we do. And he's now really becoming a national expert in how to figure this stuff out, how to understand and how to therefore communicate the value of the work to audiences who may not be as deeply immersed in it as some of us are. With that, I'll turn it over to Tyler Thompson.
Thanks Jay. Thanks council for having me here and actually, you know, having me at the table as we took on this journey years ago. I mean, currently, right now, I'm the Director of Violence Prevention at Operation Better Block. You know, I assist with the infrastructure documentation accountability within this system. But prior to that, I actually come from the Health Department. So I was at the Health Department where Dr. Hacker brought me in to open up the Office of Violence Prevention under what's known as the Public Health Approach to Gun Violence. And before that, you know, I was at the table when it was a $75,000 grant with doing this work. So to see, you know, the commitment that council has made with going from 75,000 to, you know, the, the resources that, that we have now here at the table is amazing. And then also understanding, you know, I attended Cities United years ago, but also attended recently and seeing where we're at here in the city is, is, is amazing. It gives me, let me say, an understanding that we are, we've been moving in the right direction and we're light-years ahead of other cities. We've already looked to address a lot of the challenges that other, and other cities are facing, you know, on a national level. And, and that goes into what I'm gonna speak of on today is the, the system of accountability that, that actually the outreach team is used. And it's important to understand that even as the language has evolved, is that the City of Pittsburgh is unique because it has this focus deterrent model that, you know, comes from, from Kennedy model, but it also has this public health approach, which is what takes place when outreach workers are doing what they do, when they connect individuals to resources and, and they use their relationships to attempt to change behaviors when it comes to stuff that's related to the disease, to the spread of the disease of violence. And, and these different strategies are just strategies that are are opportunities to attempt to treat the disease of violence. I think that's extremely important, what we, that we understand the language that we're attempting to treat this disease of violence. And, and that's what we have. So the language now has, has evolved to the point that it's community violence intervention. Because even Cities United, the work that they do, realize that it takes more than one model to address these things. It would be like similar to saying, when it comes to preventing the spread of COVID, we only need masks. No, we don't need masks. We, we need masks. We need to change the way we've done things over the years. We need vaccinations. There's so many things that, that it, that takes to prevent the spread of the disease of violence, like it does with spreading, preventing the spread of the disease of COVID. So what we have here is, is the system of documentation that, that, and infrastructure that we developed with students from CMU over a five-year plan. And this is up on the big board right now through Zoom. They had me connecting through Zoom. And this actually displays the work that the outreach teams are doing. So we'll get to the point where we, we could actually touch different locations within the map. And we'll, we'll touch this right here. This is a representation of Northview Hikes. And, and what you see here is a risk level assessment, which is something that an outreach worker does on a weekly basis where what the most important job of an outreach worker is that he has the pulse of what's going on in his community so that he can actually potentially get involved in, in, in different layers of the things of safety, of, of the risk level within this particular community. So what you're seeing right here is the risk level of Northview Hikes from one of our outreach workers, which shows that the risk is, risk level is at four, 12 active cases. And it shows that we've actually had 17 referrals within the last 30 days. And, and we have this level of documentation all throughout the City of Pittsburgh. Let's zoom in on on this work over in North Homewood. If you can see right, right there, that North Homewood is at a red right now. But we have 20 active cases. These are individuals that are in the Homewood community that we're actually providing resources to. And that says 71 referral were made in the last 30 days. Those are actual resources that we've gotten to the community from the outreach workers. And these resources range everywhere from employment to housing, to assistance when it, when it comes to funeral. Like these are resources that we're pumping into these communities on a daily basis. And we have outreach workers interacting. And we, but the thing is, is that we have this system of documentation, which is a system of accountability of all these things that are happening. And it also allows for the work to be data-driven. We have an opportunity where we're able to actually look at, and I don't know if, if I could share the big board, not sure of how sensitive we want to be on information that's within the big board. But when it comes to these risk level assessments, there's, there's, the outreach worker has an opportunity to, to, to be involved in preventing things when it comes to focus deterrent work. So when outreach worker actually submits a risk level assessment saying that they want police presence before something happens, that's the focus deterrent work that actually takes place. Need me to go counsel? Okay, I thought you needed me to try to enlarge it. So the focus deterrent works actually takes place from the work that outreach workers do. When outreach workers actually request for there to be law enforcement presence, it gives us the ability to actually have presence there before something actually happens. But then when it comes to the public health approach and those relationships, that's what you see when you see these 75 referrals taking place in the last 30 days. Those are people actually engaging folks on the ground within these communities, connecting them to resources and, and referrals. And like I said, just a, a myriad of things that they actually have that is actually documented, that is verified documented information on the work that outreach workers are doing. So with that being said, we, we had, you know, we wanted to just be able to kind of show the system as a whole, but we also, you know, want to be sensitive on, you know, not exposing the whole system, you know, under this form right here. If that's okay. Yes, because of the confidentiality of, of the work and the workers that's doing the work and then some of the, the clients that workers are actually working with. So I'm gonna just kind of like stop it right there. But then also be available for any questions from council on the actual, if there's any discussion on the actual the, the, the system as a whole, you know, and how the system's working and where we're at with the system and what the data is telling us right now. Cause the thing is, is that we have data that breaks down what outreach workers are doing, where they're doing it at, where we can increase things at, where we might want to decrease things at. All of that is within the system. And, and we, we kind of go over this on a weekly basis amongst the team. Everybody that's actually here sitting at this table and say, okay, we might want to increase efforts here, decrease efforts there. And, and like I said, one thing is that we actually presented this, this, this system at the conference recently and everybody said we were dealing with those same challenges y'all are dealing with, but we see y'all figured it out. And how can we get this system into our city? So we have calls set up with Syracuse, New York, with New York, with Syracuse, New York, Cleveland and New Orleans, because they're like, this is what we're missing right here is this system of accountability. With that being said, I will pass it along to Reverend Cornell Jones.
I'll be brief. I'll move this up a little bit. You know, I was, it was an honor to be at Cities United with the team and I'm talking about everyone that's at the table that came. I was, I was proud. Being someone who came here in 2017, the growth of what we've done has been amazing. And I could honestly And um I could honestly say when we went there this year, we went, we were strong. I'm talking about from, you know, I had to pull Ty away just to make sure he ate. You know what I mean? Because everyone wanted to see the, 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 the information that he had there. And that was something that everyone was talking about, cause if it's not documented, it didn't happen. And back when I first started, that was a big issue of documentation. Um, council, everyone was saying, what about the documentation? What about the documentation? They were like, oh, we need more than just a timesheet. Well, you know, we're blessed to have the documentation now to be able to talk about what we do, how we do it. And we're blessed to have people who now believe in it now. That's the thing, you know, and it, it's taken some time. But we have a group that believes in it. They know what they're doing. And they're able to take all the, the great work that they're doing and document it so that we can actually put together reports so that we could present what we're presenting to you guys right now. They're able to, you know, my role for the ones that don't know is I'm, I'm the middle person. I'm the, the one who's in between the law enforcement and the outreach team. And, and let me say, this outreach team is amazing. Uh, I'm, I'm honored to be able to work with them. You know, when I think about some of the things that, that they're doing, I just sort of jotted down some things. The, this is the, through the years, you know, law enforcement didn't have respect. And, and you tell me if we're wrong, didn't have respect for outreach workers so much. There's a level of respect that's there now. That's, that's important to know that they have for the outreach team, knowing that if that was teams getting involved, they're able to help stop some of the violence that, that could actually happen. Um, they're still, they're still doing interventions there. Even to the point now where some of the schools that the outreach workers are in, they'll give the, the outreach worker a room to be able to do mediation, to be able to pull people. That's never been done in, in, in from my experience for, for the history of violence prevention in Pittsburgh. Working with community, um, the, the community leaders, employment, helping people to get jobs. Um, I talked about in schools intervening before things happen, um intervening before big events happen downtown. Like that's huge. When we come together, when, when, when all, you know, all the signs, so that something's gonna break out when outreach workers are there because of the relationships that they have with the community, with the uh, with the kids and with the leadership, like things have been, things have been brought to peace because of us having the right, as Jay always says, the right outreach workers. Um, the mentoring, the uh, from mentoring to be, being able to take people out of the town, to be able to take them to different um places to expose them to the different programs and, and, and things that they can see. Um, attending meetings, the, the zone meetings, that everyone knows that the outreach workers go to the zone meetings. And I think what's, what people don't, don't understand is just like I'm twenty-four hours, outreach workers are twenty-four hours. So they're getting up, dealing with the situations. They're going to the crime scenes. They're going to the hospitals. They're going to, to deal with the, with the family members that are crying and bringing them from, from everything from food to resources to be able to help them with that situation. And they're working with, and this is something that's new for us. They're working with the social workers that are related to, that are connected with the um, the city of Pittsburgh. Now I meet with the social workers every morning uh to be able to uh find out, to be able to share with them what we need to do to be able to help the people that we're working with, to be able to help not just that person who's a victim, but the families and the people that need to get the resources that are there. And um, and I think that's really huge. So I feel like we're taking things to another level. Um, you know, the unity is, 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 is amazing right now. I could honestly say it through the years, that's changed. You know what I mean? The unity, the amongst the outreach team, uh, the, the unity, even as far as like dealing with law enforcement, when the outreach worker says that this is what needs to get done, people respect that now. So there's a level of respect that the outreach workers have gained and we're continuing to gain. Uh, uh, I respect the leadership. You know, Antoine Bailey's doing a, a great job. Uh, we enjoy working with Reverend Grayson on things. And we just want to continue to work together to be able to help transform our community, Madam President. It's good to see you, man. Um, so just really just trying to, hello, man. Um, just bring the people, the, the right people. We have the right people at the table. We're trying to bring the, continue to bring the right resources. I think what's important to know is, you know, the fact that you guys respect in, and are backing us up has been huge to us. So that's been big. And to know that I, it's funny to make a phone call to anybody that, that in the districts that you guys represent. I know that we're gonna get the support in the, in the the things that we can do to be able to help to transform the communities that we're blessed to work in. But back to what Tylee's working on and what he's put together, it's front lines. You know what I mean? And everyone across, I'm talking about there, then, and when we were in in Baltimore, the top organizations that are doing violence prevention were there. And a lot of them were going up to him saying, we heard what you have, can we see what you're doing? So I thought that was amazing. So we're blessed to have that, that piece of the puzzle there. Next person that will be speaking, um, I guess that would probably be on the next panel, is that what it? Is uh Vaughn Madden.
You have room for you, Vaughn.
Right, right.
Cause I gave him a proclamation. He can sit at the table.
Vaughn Madden's doing excellent work on the south side. Very known for the west end too, actually.
Uh, yes, thanks, Council for uh, for having me. My name is Vaughn Madden. Um, I'm the outreach worker in Zone Three on the south side of uh for Reach. Um, just uh some of the work that I have been doing over um on the south side is a lot of uh interventions, um mediations, um some of the work that we're doing at the school. Um, the there's a lot of, you know, news and things about like Carrick High School that was on the news of back uh early in the school year when the school first started. And um we was able to, you know, put a intervention team at the school. Um, a program we call Safe Passage. And we have three individuals at that school every day, uh Monday through Friday, able to put out uh a lot of you know, fires and things of that nature. So we was able to also, you know, work directly with the principal, uh vice principal, her administration staff, and able to build up some plans, identify some key players that were causing a lot of violence, a lot of stuff that was happening up in the Plaza in Carrick weren't related to her school. There were students who used to go to her school that was coming back up, causing a lot of problems. So it was just a lot of uh misinformation that was given out to the community. And what we was able to do is um disseminate a lot of resources in that area to try to uh get the community buy-in. Um, get a lot of people from the community, former athletes that used to play, you know, for Carrick High School to come up to the school. And that know families and friends to help put out a lot of fires at that, at that school space. But that was just some of the things that we were doing, you know, at the school level. And then we um also transitioned to some of the work that we was doing downtown at the um, the McDonald's area, working with uh some of the business uh district down in that area. And also meeting with some of the principals, who cares, or uh transitioning from school to downtown. And we was able to leverage uh tremendous relationships in that, in that space, making sure that students had uh access to uh mentors, resources. And we was able to be a, a, that buffer between businesses. Uh, people thus making that transition home from work as students as well. Making sure that students also felt safe as they're able to make that transition downtown.
Let me um say that we're joined by uh Councilwoman Deborah Gross and Council President Teresa Kell Smith.
Now to Reverend Grayson. Thank you, and we're honored to be here behalf of Reach. Um, I preached yesterday, so I won't take long today. Um, I think it's been said best from the sentiments of everyone who spoke before, kind of the work of Reach to date. About a year ago this time, um all of us executive staff um was at the table almost every day. I know every Monday, several hours trying to shape and craft what this um particular uh grant or contract would look like for as of January and moving from a very small grant where we had a contract, we are again, the workers were committed even at that amount to moving into the scale that we are now, going from six people to close to thirty on staff, has been indeed not only a challenge but a wonderful opportunity. I'm really honored to serve with the group of men and women at this table because, I say the Reach team, because they are, everyone is impactful. Um, the word used was the pulse of the community and each of them who's at the table, who in their various zones have a, a strong sense of their pulse of, of their particular, of the community at large, or their particular areas in which they served. Um, the respectability and uh uh relationship is a key word. Um, because each of them, when they get to a scene or before seen, they have relationships and context that able to diffuse, they're able to share, they're able to help. We are, we see ourselves really as allies to the police office allies at the hospital, allies of the school system. We're in probably now seven schools making impact. We do mediations. And so um the work never stops. We tie into the mayor's vision around peace. And we each and every day try to make the city more peaceful. Of course, there's challenges, but overall for our first year in eleven, in eleven months in, I couldn't ask for much more from this team who every day um truthfully told, risk their lives. None of us, we have vests uh protection. None of us have guns. We go to wherever we're called each and every day, meetings I've seen, you've seen us at meetings and support groups wherever we're there. We are front and center. We're branding ourselves as Reach, but we're hands-on. We're not from a distance when called upon on any level. Reach has been fun and center. And I'm again honored to serve. Again, as you know, we're in all zones, six communities. And we're just making the impact and the difference. The statistics are high and we went like, but at the end of the day, we can't do the number of reduced potential homicide. Uh, not the retaliations and the mediations that we do, the impact we have. And again, it's, it's just um um, just been a wonderful experience of the impact each and every one brings to the table. Vaughn spoke just of one area, but we could have, we've had the time. We could bring forth each and every one of our outreach workers to talk about the impact we have each and every day. Good example, even on tomorrow, the support of family who have a lost one in Homewood, we're providing, you know, the space, the help with the food, supporting the family, wraparound services. That's kind of what we've been able to do. And that's just one small example, you know, um of trying to be hands-on and available to the community at large. It's been like, that's the best I want to say, just the impact we've had. We've grown um intentionally and not just to throw uh the, the wrong people at the wrong time to fulfill a seat. Um, I've been very intentional in working with the executive team. Uh, they bring the strength in terms of who could be an asset and not a liability. And with the recommendations collectively, we vetted process, went through, examined, went back again, and uh we feel so comfortable that we have gathered a team of men and women of all groups and ages from, you know, GEDs to PhDs at the table to make an impact and make a difference. Thank you for this opportunity to share um about the work we've done in the last eleven months and look forward to taking it to another level on next year and the third year and years to come. It's been impactful.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else from the panel?
Need it to, I could, there, there's a spreadsheet I could display of some of the, some of the data.
Yes, sir. Please, thank you, Mr. Thomas.
It's just uh, just kind of continuing to show the level, you know, when folks speak of uh work being data-driven. This is just the level. This right here, this would be a risk level assessment. And this was recommendations that would come from, let me try to make it a little bigger, Jay. Here we go. So this would be from a risk level assessment. And this is just last three months. Um, and it, when it risk, when the uh community, when outreach worker submits risk level assessment, they also put recommendations on what actions they feel need to take place. Um, so as you can see here, this shows you the, the amount of times within the last three months that outreach may have actually wanted to just increase it's a hundred and eighty-nine, increase outreach in that particular area. What's important here on the focus deterrent part is law enforcement presence. Outreach um suggested that we have law enforcement presence a hundred and sixty-two times. Um, in, in each time that we, that we ever successfully do these, this is what, where the focus deterrent part kind of kicks in. Um, when it comes to conflict mediation, we're at thirty-two conflict mediations. Um, referral for services, twenty-three, and then um uh custom notifications. But the level, like I said, of information, and I'm just gonna skim through this. I don't want to actually zero on it. But if you look at the board on the level of information that's, that's drawn, shows you how much um we're actually data-driven when it comes to the work that's being done. And that's just from one of the spreadsheets that we, that we have right there. So, so that's just, you know, displaying how we're data-driven. This is, this is not a narrative uh work that's taking place. It's actual a, a team being able to analyze what's taking place and where, where, where we can actually do different um strategies around, you know, shooting and activities and hotspots throughout the city of Pittsburgh. I just felt it was important for me to display that.
Anything else? We're open for questions? Alright, so the way that we council does this is we now go down the line. And each of them, each of the council members that want will have their time. Questions always starting. Councilwoman Deborah Gross will start and then we'll go down to Wilson. Food of this conversation. Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I want to thank all of the people here today for coming and testifying and help, not only helping us solve the problem, but helping council understand the problems. Um, so that we can make better policy. That's what we, we do here at the post agendas, right? You're here to edify us. Um, so that we can understand things we don't already understand. Um, and so I uh wasn't at the conference and we didn't get a briefing except for a few kind of conversations, I think maybe in the hallway or overhearing kind of what was what was said. Um, and so congratulations on, on having people acknowledge your work. It's always good to have that kind of sounding board. To know where you're heading in the right direction and to get the positive affirmations. I appreciate that. Um, I think it's also important that I, I heard the panel acknowledge that you know, we're, we're seeing more violence than we, we hope to see. Um, and but we're not the only city. Um, and it's a hard time. Um, it's certainly a hard time for our teenagers. We said this in other conversations at the, at the council table. Um, I have a teenager um in the city and um it, they lived through this pandemic differently than we did as adults. Right? And so, you know, our kids all went home. Um, that week in March in twenty twenty and didn't go back to school for eighteen months. I'm sorry. Didn't go back to school for eighteen months. And, and that makes a difference, I think. They they were old enough to know that we were all freaking out. But they didn't have enough life experience to kind of comfort themselves or know that probably things were going to be okay, or, or to really have the coping, any of the coping skills. Um, so that just exacerbates all the other pre distinct dysfunction that we had in the city. Right? And so it's now, it's worse. Um, so I'm glad that we're putting more resources into it. I'm glad that those are people resources and not just cash. You know, we've translated, started to translate the cash sitting in the trust fund into actual um action that people are taking in the staffing and the resources. One thing I didn't hear, and I was listening on YouTube before I came into chambers, um when I was kind of back in my office, is that if, if I missed it, um forgive me, but I didn't hear anyone mention dynamics around differences in gender. Either in the perpetrators of violence, the victims of violence, of what are your systems around um gender identity? Um, I heard kind of like stepping in when there's been violence. And then I heard kind of like supporting families. Um, in my experience from what I'm told, right? A lot of times it's, it's moms who are really on the front lines here because we know that our our poorest households, there's seventy percent of them in the city of Pittsburgh are female-headed households with children, right? So is there anything we need to know?
I think on the preventive side, um almost, I think all of our outreach workers play a role in that it's working with moms, with our, our teams with, you know, football teams of other teams, the boxing, uh, I have a, Chris works for boxing team. Uh, we are, other ones are in different schools, girls groups. Um, so we are the preventive end of the impact of everyone. Not only do they bring the expertise and relationship with um in the work, but they, everyone on the side pours in their gifts and talents and hearts and on the preventive end. And I think that's not kind of recorded in what else we do. And then the impact of being at at least six schools is very impactful, or seven schools that I know of, and, and asked to be in more. So our workers are not only everywhere on the job twenty-four, seven, twenty-four, seven, if it need be, but they're also on their own free time, mostly volunteer work in the prevention area.
So in the city, are you seeing kind of what we hear at large that there's more of a problem with girls and violence than there was in the past? They see some nodding heads back in the chambers behind your head. So, um, you know, is there, do you match outreach workers to the people that are, you're trying to reach? Um, do you staff up differently? Um, do you staff up differently that way? I mean, are we seeing it in Pittsburgh the way we're hearing about it elsewhere?
We definitely know there is around, especially school incident death. There's an impact on the females in terms of how it connects to uh, some of the, some of the violence. We also see today, the statistics have changed also, and someone else can jump in on the number of females who've been uh. Fatalities or gun incidents. So that has increased. And so we are conscious of that and we try to connect. Our staff, again, we've increased our email outreach workers, not to the number we liked. Well, we have grown in that area too, because we're also conscious of. Of gender as well as age in our support group. But we are trying to um, grow. And again, that's why we were, been pretty intentional to find the right people from inception, from January to now. But we also trying to make sure that each worker brings the pieces to help make it stronger. Not have all the answers to each make it stronger. And that's the intentionality of the executive staff. We have, you know, Tuan who um. Leads us as the program manager. We have three strong supervisors and all the input from the exec team plays a role in. Who, what area needs assistance immediately and who else should we bring on board to make a difference?
Hmm. Just coming on the ground, the community investment grants side. Where we are very conscious of the need to. Reach out to the entire family. And so many of the recipients are, are going to be doing exactly that, are doing exactly that, reaching out. Starting with where they can start with and then expanding those relationships. And that is what some of we just put into the RFP. That that's what we wanted people to be doing is reaching out to, for more and more family members. Because the younger folk don't, didn't just come up with, with this on their own. They got it from someplace else. They got it from inside their families oftentimes, people that are around their families and else getting it from this society at large. So they're seeing international violence and conflicts and political violence and conflicts all over the place. You know, and just all over the place. So.
I suspect there are often younger siblings around.
Absolutely. And so we want to be able to affect more and more of the family members. And a good place to start is with whoever you can, you start where you can start. Whether it's the reentering person or with the younger person or whoever it is, wherever you can start, we start there. And I want to reach out. Do more teaching of the entire family. So that's just, that's just one component.
Glad to hear that. I think that was one of the things we talked about when we created the fund that. Um, I'm glad that, that we have in the language at council that these funds are flexible that way. So that they can be actually supporting households. Um, that was the way I'm reading it. Um, and so I'm eager to see um, that it's. Thank goodness you're reaching out and intervening in crises, right? When there is a crises and you're inter, in like, in, in your seating. Mediating between people who are already in conflict with each other. But it's always good to put other pieces of the pipeline into, you know, kind of prevention points in place if we can, so that. We're not getting those conflicts, right? Right? So.
And we'll continue to do that because we will, we need to do more and more of it. And that's. The years go on, as we do more and more of these grants, get more money out to community groups, will we continue to emphasize that? Go ahead, Quin.
I just, uh, just to add to what you're saying, um. Each situation that happens, we strategically look at who's the best fit to be able to help that person. Who, who are they connected to? If we know a family member or if they were on a sports team or something like that, whatever. Situation that we strategically want to do to find out who's the best fit. Someone might be from another neighborhood. There were something like that or that they might not, you know, deal with us so much. That's not a good fit, but we look at each situation, assess the situation and find out who. Is the right one to be able to get, you know, connected to this person so that we can give them the best that we could give them.
Thank you. Apologize for the, the feedback we are getting here. Sorry.
Let's say, um, when it comes to, to, when it comes to. The models that City of Pittsburgh has here, and as far as the disease models preventing the spread of the disease. You, the, the goal is to interrupt the transmission of the disease, you know, regardless, you know, male, you know, female. And some of the stuff that we've seen inside the schools may have had, you know, some more females involved than it had in the past. But the thing is, is that when females are involved, there are males that will eventually, you know, so females may end up start fights. But the males that will be a part of that spread involves guns. So it's important though, the work that we're doing, that we attempt to interrupt the transmission of disease anywhere that we see it because. Us, you know, folks that are on the ground doing the work understands that if the transmission happens here, we know where the spread is going to lead to. We understand how the spread has traditionally worked throughout our communities.
So in Pittsburgh, you're saying that female violence is exclusive of gun violence.
I'm not saying it's exclusive of gun violence, but I'm saying is that anywhere the transmission pops up, it's important for us to address it. As trying to prevent the spread of the disease anywhere, whether it's male or female.
Appreciate that. I don't want to take too much time. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and um. I appreciate you putting this together. Um, you know, especially in these times. I know that uh, you know, everyone, mostly everyone that I'm sitting across from. Uh, has been someone that we've been working very closely uh, with recently and um. You know, I guess I could say it unfortunately. Yeah. But, you know, to that, to that effect, I um, wanted to ask a few questions. I know others want to get to theirs. I, I think just the, the global question that, that I've always had, that I always have. When we talk about a system and how to really kind of solve a problem and how we're going to use this to solve the problem. Like, what's a success look like? So. You know, that deals with like what we're measuring and then what the outcomes will be. So can someone paint a picture like what success looks like, what a successful?
Let me show you, let me, let me, let me say what. Success looks like from the work that we've done, but the work simply up a period, right? Um, as you know, when we got involved with up a period, it was a twenty-person fight. Law enforcement had to come inside the buildings, had to bring dogs, they had to bring, you know, stun guns in, but twenty people were fighting at once. Right? So that means there's twenty transmissions of the disease taking place inside the building, right? And when there's cell phones being involved, that's for it to spread outside of the building, which means there's. People connected to those twenty people that could help spread the disease, right? So as you move forward and you bring outreach workers into this space and you start, and you still have fights, but when those fights get to the point. That it's five people fighting, it's four people fighting. We've just successfully minimized or lowered the transmission of those disease inside that building. And we did it off relationships. So when those relationships weren't in the building, when one person fought, the spreads happened, the next person felt like he has to get involved. So then you'll have twenty people fighting, but off of relationships that outreach workers develop with these kids inside these buildings. When two people fight, folks get to the point of saying, because of relationship I had with this outreach worker, I'm gonna let those two people get into those fights. And that's less of a spread that can happen when there's two people fighting compared to twenty people fighting. When twenty people's fighting, the cell phones is gone. There's people outside that building preparing for the spread of that disease because of that twenty-person fight. So we've had that success in all the places that we've been at, that we've lowered the transmission of the disease in these different places that we've had a presence at.
Do you feel like you have um, like adequate uh, tools in place to, to um. You know, understand that the disease has, has stopped spreading?
Let me, let me say this, is that when it comes to preventing the spread of COVID, right? You need more than masks. You need folks to change how, how they've done things. You need folks working on vaccine. You need folks working on boosters. So with the work that we're doing, we fit into one of those categories. Like with the work, all this comprehensive network and that's take place within the safety, we fit in all these different categories. But what doesn't need to happen and always, you know, tell you this, what, what, what we talked about is that. In this space, a lot of times the hamster and the wheel starts to happen where this is out, this is in, this is out, this is in. We need to continue to build on what we built on. When we started from seventy-five thousand to the point that we're at now, we need to say, okay, this is what we have, this is what the system have. Now what else do we need to add to this particular system? You know what I mean? To prevent, to try to prevent the spread is.
What else is needed at this time?
I'll let somebody else talk because I'll talk too much.
I think what's, what's needed at this time is um, community involvement. That's key. This isn't just a, an outreach thing or just a law enforcement thing. This is a community at large thing. So I think it's important, I think it's important for the community to work, for us to continue to work together. But also think it's important for them to see us working together on a regular basis too, so, so they can see us in the community and working. You know, uh, you know, helping the families. I know each one of you are amazing, you know what I mean? And I've, I've been out there on the front lines with you. Uh, um, but I think it's important for, for the community to see the unity that we have and um, continue to have. But, you know, a lot of times people are like, that's a they, you know, that's, that's y'all. I'm like, no, it's us. That's us. If we're one Pittsburgh, we got to work as one Pittsburgh. And I think that's extremely important. Also learned that, um, you know, when I was speaking at a, a presentation in one of the communities. You know, uh, one lady got up and said, you know what, and I, I share this all the time. One lady said, you know what, I, I can't deal with the streets. I don't know anything about the streets. She said, but I have a tattoo removal company. She said, and I'll use my tattoo removal company to be able to help, you know, you and be, to be able to help some of the people who have like gang tattoos and things like that. I said, man, that's violence prevention. It also showed me right there that everybody brings a piece, the puzzle to the, to the table. So we just got to find the passion so that we're not looking at TV saying, man, that's a mess that they're doing that. It's, it's, why don't we transform and work together? Be able to transform our communities. Um, so that, that's key. You know, there's a lot of people out there like that lady that's like, that it's hungry. So I think if we include them and find them a lane, I think we'll really do some transformation.
The more that we spread our message, the more the community understands what we're doing, the better off we will be. We're wrapping around. Our community around the most distressed people, the most stressed communities. The more that we do that and our message is consistent. The more that we're walking lock and step with council, the mayor's office and everyone, it'll be better. It's going to take some time because it, it didn't go bad overnight. It's going to certainly take some time for things to get better. I think the school, sorry, I think the school system, if, if not really understands our impact. The uh, fights and issues at one of the charter, not charter school, you prefer the example. We have that principal knows, um, respects our expertise. They've called, he's called us in. Um, on campus and off campus to mediate a number of situations that could have gone south. Avon and myself, uh, gone on a couple of occasions last week. Uh, Mr. Bailey got a call for potentially a kid who might have had a parent found potentially, was it BB gun or gun? We don't know. The three of us went up to the school immediately, did a one-on-one, offered him an opportunity to, to work. But that's an example where. If you would ask um, Mr. Graff, the impact that reach is having at his school alone would be a good example of just partnerships and. How it's changing and knock on wood, um, they have not had issues. We have two workers in the school, a male and a female. On top of any time there's a need, he's brought a couple of situation off campus with parents. To mediate um, at the Grayson Center as well as going to the school. So whenever there's a call. Um, we tried to intervene and reduce the disease. Uh, so that's just an example. I think it's growing. We are in, like I said, seven different schools and the call, you ask the question, what more could, what more could happen? Really, in some ways, an increase of capacity to be able to get to even more schools with this talking predominantly high schools in Carrick. But we can't, we're stretched already. But that's just an example of one impact of one school through relationships and respecting and them, and the staff. Looking forward to the impact we bring to the table.
Let me add on one second.
Uh, just two things, uh, when you mentioned about some, some of the successes that we have seen and also is some of the things that we do need. Just from speaking from the ground, uh, some of the successes that I have witnessed and been a part of. Uh, we have uh, four individuals that returned to the South Side from uh, prison, three federal and one state. And when, once they returned, they immediately knew the work that I was doing and we have got all four of them uh, employment. And outside of the, uh, the four employment, they had employment for the last six months. Uh, three of them are uh, instrumental in helping with some of the violence that are taking place. Just with the relationships that they have in the community, the relationship that I have, and some of the players that uh, particularly cause violence in our, our community on the South Side. Were able to leverage those relationships, re-enter them back into the community and uh, they're huge stakeholders. So. Just to answer that question, what some of the successes look like, we directly work with individuals who went to prison for gun violence, shootings, or back in the community. Um, and just doing a lot of work with those people. Also, some of the things that I feel that we need just from being on the ground level is some programming. Um, I have worked with uh, several uh, families. What I mean program is just some, some funds to go back into um. Youth, youth development programming and also like some parent engagement. So we have some families that we work on that have experienced uh, gun violence in their home that are looking to relocate. Um, looking to move out or looking to some, you know, how clothing, the things in that nature um, that I work with directly. And also some of the things that I had to see on a day-to-day basis, asking those questions like, hey, what, you know, monetary thing do you have? What do you have for? You know, my son, um, outside of just me individually or some of the outreach workers just doing a one-on-one mediation. So some of the things that we're trying to do is partner with some of the community centers, recreation centers, and just providing some resources so we can do uh. Some programming in some of the recreation centers. So I think uh, funding for programming is, is key. To some of the young people that we um, doing, not just salary driven. Um, putting, you know, men and women on the streets to do the intervention, but then that follows that we're uh, programming.
Something else we clearly need is a much more robust communication strategy. So let's put that on, you can put that on your checklist.
Great.
That communicates.
I want to get.
I just say this, uh, so we're talking about a win. A win is when, when we got together and made sure that that young man who was, whose house was getting shot at. Taking care of him. We pulled the resources together. We've, we've made the phone calls, we connected with who we needed to connect with. There was a level of connection that we didn't have, so we were able to connect with you. You had the connection to be able to make the phone call. That kid's still alive. So that's a win right there. Those are the type of ones, a lot of times people think that the wins have to be so big, but you know, Vaughn's talking about these ones right here. I was thinking about someone getting a job, someone graduating from school, you know what I mean? Like, these are the things that honestly, we like, we celebrate hard. Because a lot of these people that we're dealing with, that we're blessed to deal with are, are shooters. And these are people who could have gave up and wanted to give up. Because of these relationships and these outreach workers, they didn't. And then the relationship that we had with you, with you, we were able to take things to another level. Now that kid's still alive. And that's, those are the miracles that we're blessed to be a part of.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because I always point back to that, that time. Um. I think that was literally the first summer I was in office and I was, I was fortunate that I had met a few people on the way. Uh, like Tyler to kind of lead me down to talking to more people like yourself and everyone else before, um. You know, that was before that we made a bigger investment to, to what's happening here. Uh, I, I did have some, some more questions, uh, if we could just, I could just go through them real quick. So we talk a lot about the disease, or you mentioned the disease. So just basically, how do you know someone's infected and, and how does um. Basically, what prompts the, the assessment?
Risk level assessment. So outreach workers do a risk level assessment on a weekly basis. Um, it goes from uh, one through four, which green through red. And each um, indicator has actually, actually brought the indicator sheet with me today to be able to pass out.
But just to start us off in terms of.
Off of the exposure. So it's really not hard to actually say where we have the exposure of the disease at in, in these communities. Like, literally it's broadcast on the news on a daily basis. Um, and, and you got to really understand when it happens, that's exposure to the disease. But then also was, was, was not always looked at is the trauma associated with that. We're always working in areas that had always been traumatized because they've already been exposed to the disease of violence. Then there's a way, and, and the thing, when it comes to this, this language on the disease of violence, there's a way that you got to go about treating that, right? And what we also learn when it comes to treating diseases is that just because you have, um, let's say a resolution or a symptom to something. Doesn't mean people want to engage and say, you know, give me the vaccine right away. You know, I understand that this will help me. You could be in this space and you could be dealing with folks that's exposed to the disease, it's going to take your relationship. And that's, that's what we see when we look at in our system sometimes is that outreach workers may pump out, there's literally. There's, there's, there's views on here for employment, fifty thousand views that came from the work that these folks got, where it says. There's been fifty thousand times that someone has looked at a resource around employment, right? It may not, when it come to access, access may not be as high, right? Because it's, it's saying that. Folks say that we know what they need, they know what they've asked us for, but they may not be at that point right now that they're even willing to take those resources. But it's the relationship and the consistency that we allow them to get to the point. And that's how you get, we don't have the big budget of campaign that folks have. Take the vaccine and have celebrities taking the vaccine and all that other stuff. All we have is continued consistency in relationship. The folks that have been exposed to the disease and say, this is how we work through this. This is how we prevent the spread from happening within our community. Because we know we've been exposed to the disease around.
So it comes in a lot of different ways. So it's not, you know, it doesn't just come in through a public safety report. Or a school reaching out. I mean, I guess I'm trying to gather on, you know, like, like what's the automatic way that. You know, like, like a potential somewhere it's been affected.
It all kicks in right from, from, we have a risk level assessment big board that comes in on a daily basis from the work. Of the twenty or thirty folks that are on the ground doing the work. So we actually have a protocol. We have a system that says this generated this, that goes to, you know, to there, that happens to there. So it's literally data driven from, from the ground. So the thing is, it's not data driven from the top down, data driven from the ground up.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, I appreciate that. Um, th- there, there's a lot of uh, jobs out there. What's the barrier to getting everyone who has a gun a job?
Well, relationship.
Well, everyone who is going to potentially retaliate or act out.
Now, Bob, I'm being honest, it comes down to relationship. Like everyone doesn't necessarily feel when, when they're in that space. And that's why there's, there's when, if you ever look at the research of Kennedy's work, right? Kennedy gets to the point of saying, keeping them alive. And when I first heard him say that, I said, well, that's simple, keeping them alive. But that's one of his, his, of the secret sauces to his formula is keeping them alive because they actually will actually age out of that range. There's a fifteen to thirty range where their highest, um, cause of death is homicide. So if you just developing these relationships and, and I get you to go on a job interview every now and then, or maybe get you on one of my six-week training or whatnot, I'm moving you towards that aging out process. I'm keeping you alive, literally. So really it gets to the point that sometimes the light comes on at different times for individual. I mean, folks know I've been involved with this work over twenty years. When I got involved with Richard Garland and, and literally I aged out of, you know, the risk thing, it was kind of like just keeping me alive. It was opportunities, relationships. So the light came on for me at thirty-one years old, literally. And, and literally you age out of that age around thirty-four, thirty-five. So the work, this work is so important and the part of keeping them alive is something that's really underestimated.
And the majority of the people that are doing this work, councilmen, live in the neighborhoods that they service. Right? And so we are able to see young people as they grow up. And we're consistent in our methods. It hasn't changed, councilman. So when they age out, when they get older, they know that we're there to help and hold them by the hand and do whatever we need to do to make them a better person.
Okay.
And, um, they've, this is important to see. They've also have had, some people have had the disease before. And some people have been healed from the disease, you know what I mean? So they know what the disease looks like. You know what I mean? They know what the disease looks like. They're like, okay, we see, these are the symptoms of what they're doing right now. These, these symptoms could get them killed. So because of them seeing these symptoms right here, because they have may have had these symptoms before, they're like, okay, I know what got me connected and to be able to connect people, you know, this, that's why there's like, like support groups for people who have diseases. Be able to talk some the same way, to be able to talk through some things, to let them know, these are the things that you'll go through if you keep them going through these stages of the disease. But these, these are violence interrupters and I'm pointing back here because these guys are amazing. Are the ones who, uh, who are the ones who are able to inter, intercede and on behalf and be able to help them to get the, the supports, as Tally would say, to be able to help them through the process. And I realize this, not everybody wants the job too, though.
Right.
So you got to understand, not everyone's like, you know, because they're making a lot of money on the streets. So, but one thing that we're doing is we're offering.
So we have a lot of, um, we have, we have, uh, you know, several millions of dollars of funds at the Stop the Violence Fund. And there's, uh, grants that are going out, have gone out, will go out. How do we build into the, the app in terms, or how do we analyze the data from the app about like what, um, programs fit into? Like where the gaps are that you're seeing when you're working with people?
Well, first of all, you know, everybody that, that, um, received the grant will be a tab on, on the app as, as far as a resource. Right? And then what we look at is as we're sending people to these resources, you know, it gives us accountability to be able to say, okay, is this effective to the people that we're sending them? And then if not, as we move down the road, it's like, okay, maybe we change the grant. You know, where we're focusing more on this. Cause to me, at the end of the day, this work is important that we're, that we're, let's say, supporting people that can have relation. Right? And that's why you'll see with this new grant that's coming out, focusing on coaches. Cause we obviously know that coaches have the relationship with the kids and they have the ratio with the parents. So as we continue to do this work, it's important that we're focusing on organizations, individuals that have relationships. And how do we support those folks that have relationships in our community?
That's great. So you'll be tracking all the different groups that.
We'll be tracking, uh, they'll, they'll all be a tab.
Yeah, because they all are a resource.
Yes, they're all a resource, right? Cause I don't think they'd be getting a grant if they're not a resource.
Great. Last question. You know, I got questions. Now I got questions. Yeah. Uh, last question is, so how does, um, how does this outreach team work with the Allegheny, um, Health Roots Program? Because, you know, we all know that, um, and the roots program is reaching out on the streets. Uh, and that's, uh, you know, the program right now that's being funded through emergency service, uh, grants, uh, emergency solutions grants. And then council allocated ten million to get that, uh, under contract so that we can have not only, um, an increased, um, presence for solving issues related to homelessness, but also an alternative response to police. So with that, um, I mean, I'm aware of some instances when, you know, you're like directly working with them, but I'd like to just, you know, to, uh, understand more deeply like, you know, how, how do we, how do we see that intersection between the outreach that's happening here and what Roots is doing?
Yeah. And it's, it's something that's actually being worked on now. Um, Director Jones is, um, connected with, um, Laura Drogowski to be able to connect those things together. Of course, you already know that, um, we have a strong relationship with Dan. Um, uh, and we know Dan's team very well. Uh, we're going to make sure that the outreach teams know each other very well so that we can be able to work together. Yeah. So I mean, you know, it's a process right now. It's something that can be stronger, but you know, through the social, social workers who working together with Dan and then connecting with his team. Like I personally have worked with him a lot and, and some of the outreach workers have direct phone numbers with some of the people that are over there, but it's a process that we're working on really improving.
We're working on our relationship near, as you said, councilman, there's a lot of intersection between the two. We're working on coming closer together, talking more, communicating more and building our relationship within the two teams to become better.
Thank you, uh, for taking all my questions. I appreciate each and every one of you. Uh, even people that aren't on this table, people sitting back there, what you do. And, uh, thank you for, for helping out all the time.
Thank you for the work that you've done.
Thank you for your professionalism. I appreciate.
So I'm going to go down to, um, we're grateful to be joined by Dr. O'Keele. And so I want to you, then I'll come back to.
Oh, thank you. Are you all finished?
We have other folk, but I want to.
Yeah, no, no, no problem. I'm sorry I'm late.
You're good. Unless you want to wait, I can.
Nah, I, I mean, I, I really don't have too many pressing questions. I just really want to ask you a couple of simple things. Thank you for all the work you do. Cornell, you know, I had to call you. What was it? Midnight, few, few months back, we had a murder up in Brookline. I found it very effective, the team that was sent out there, uh, Father Anthony.
Father Abbot, after we sent the reach guys and we sent Father.
That's right. That's right. That's right. I was a little concerned when you say, oh, we're going to send a team out there. Jeez, what are you going to do? So, but you know, I was there, I met them. I wanted to see firsthand, you know, what they did, really just calm, calming nerves for that, for that moment. And, uh, they were very effective. I, I, I really, um, thought it was fruitful to have them there. They talked to kids walking up down the street, parents and that sort. So, so I just want to say my experience in turning to, um, violence prevention outreach has been positive so far in the way of responding to a murder, um, you know, but I guess my question is like this for you. I grew up in the city. We had fights. We had differences with other neighborhoods and nothing new. What's the difference today in your opinion as to why kids are turning to firearms more so than we did? We had guns. I could have had access to all the guns I wanted as a kid. I actually had my own, of course. But what's the difference today versus when we were growing up?
And the first part of that is that the media controls the narrative. Right? So the media controls what our young people are seeing and listening to, and they are imitating. So as a result of that, and I don't know if the people in this room can control that narrative. Right? We don't have a counter for the positive music. That part of our culture is gone by and large, right? So one of the things that is the drivers is that the media controls those things. And, um, honestly, uh, it's easier to pull a gun and then to swing it somewhere. Takes less than two point two pounds of pressure to pull the trigger on, on, on a gun. A little bit easier to do that than actually stand up and fight somebody and potentially take a loss. You can just shoot and it's done. But they also equate some of this like a video game as well.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah, I understand. And well, go ahead.
Add to that is, um, prior to the pandemic, though, the city was trending downwards. Like literally before COVID, city might have been, was, was at like approaching thirty-five. It was a point where thirty-five was, was, was the number. So it was trending downward at thirty-five and then the pandemic hit. Just, I think it's.
Pandemic possibly just set people off, whether it be nerves or whatever you can attribute it to.
Hurt people, hurt people. You know what I mean? There's a lot of people that are, that are hurting and on that, it's like, you know, I use analogy to pop can shaking, the stress, the employment, whatever it is that they're going through, you know, I mean, and kaboom, we blew up and now you in a penitentiary to rest of your life.
I get asked often, whether it's from a reporter or people in my district. What are you going to do? What are the police going to do about the violence? What are the police going to do with the violence? I say, and I believe this to be true, our police are reactive. We don't necessarily do the work and, and I'm hoping that you all do this type of work as to getting, whether it's in schools, younger people. That's really what we're talking about here, right? So, you know, I don't think our police can really, you know, dictate who picks up a gun and not. They can react to it and hopefully, you know, put that person behind bars if necessary. But, uh, much broader than that, I think it's, and I heard you all talking about, you know, your different programs, but you get into schools a lot? I mean, is your relationship good with Pittsburgh Public Schools? Is that right? So you get in outreach?
Schools, uh, working with, the schools are honored that we're there, uh, the schools that we're in. Uh, they're glad we're there. The impact is major and we're just hoping to increase that number uh, also because more principals are asking overall or more for our, for our present. And each school is designed differently in terms of a need where not security guards, not bodyguards, we, we I'm in and the relationship, many of us on the community have those relationships before going into the school. Revs from the football team or whatever, or other programs. And so that helps a lot. We can diffuse because relationship, we can diffuse. So many, so many incidents within the schools have been very impactful.
Okay. Hey, Rev, that's, that's really it for me. I, I, you know, I just want to thank, thank you all for what you do. We'll, uh, you know, continue to use your resources. I'm happy to have them.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Mr. Lavelle.
I don't, I don't have any questions for you all. Um, I'll just simply also reiterate work and my thanks and hope you all know to the extent that I can do anything possible to assist you, I will. Well, I believe in the work. Thank you.
Okay. So now it's my turn and I'm not going to be so kind. Okay. I'm going to be honest. And, and, and I hope, you know, you, you understand that it's because I do care tremendously. I used to work at Langley and that's how I met you. And you were doing a lot of work there. I worked with Pittsburgh Public Schools and, and I ran the Parent Educational Resource Center. And I worked with parents a lot. And I think the mayor is absolutely right to say that parents are part of the solution. Um, and, but I want to be mindful that a lot of our kids in Pittsburgh Public Schools or in the city of Pittsburgh don't live with a parent. And they live with a second time around grandparent or they live with, in foster care. And part of my concern has been the foster care system and what's happening to our kids every single day in homes. But they're taken out of their home, that the only home that they know. They're fit with their families, whether it's with a grandparent or sibling. And they're putting them to foster care, the foster care system and oftentimes abused terribly in the, in those homes. And so for me, I, I, you know, when I think what kids are going through, I don't even think we have to ask why. There's so much that they're going through. It could be video games. It could be things in the community, but oftentimes it's what's happening within their own heart and their own minds and in their own souls and in their own homes. And, and I think a lot of times kids will avoid going home. And we can keep kids early in the morning till late at night. But if we're not working on that family or working with whomever they're living with, then we're not really helping the kids and we're just playing a bunch of games here and we're not going to really see results. And I do, and we can say that's because of the pandemic and I do think that's part of it, but I don't think that's the only thing that's happening. We also had a higher number of police officers, which meant we had the opportunity to build police community relations. Where sometimes those officers built relationships with kids. When I worked at Pittsburgh Public, I remember there was a school police officer at the time who noticed a kid had said something that was, that was odd. I never thought anything of it. But to him, it was, it was significant enough that he looked into it. And we found out later that that kid was being molested every single day in their home. And you know, but if it weren't for that person, that conversation that was about a Christmas event, it wasn't even about public safety. But if it weren't for that interaction, that, that police building relationships that they had, opportunity they had, nobody would ever have known. I mean, eventually got help, but I, I mean, the kid committed suicide as an adult. So, I mean, I've seen a lot of that working with the Pittsburgh Public Schools and I've seen a lot of pain and it makes you hurt for the kids. So I don't, when people come to me and they tell me all the things they're doing, I don't care. If I see the numbers are up, I want to know why. I want to know what we can do differently. And I'm going to fight for the kids. And I think that we need to understand that there has to be some correlation between what's happening with them and, and homes and foster home, foster care homes. Some foster care homes, we know are amazing. And they help get kids out of those really abusive homes and situations. But there are a lot of them that are not all so amazing and kids are being abused in those homes. So to me, I think that there's a definite correlation and I do care about that. I do care about the data and, and some of the things you're saying. And I have a scheduled meeting with Dr. Natalie so we can look at data to see some of the things that, um, maybe we should be looking at differently or there's some ways that we can draft a good response to help the kids in the community. And I know Reverend Burgess and Councilman Lavelle do that's kind of work all the time. But I also think, um, I'd like to know a little bit more about the social workers that we have in the Office of Community Health and Safety. First, let me thank you all for the work that you do. And I know you're all men, so next time bring some women. And so, so I'm going to say that. Are you ever, I just, why, why is she not at the table? Sitting there before. Okay, we have one woman. And so, but I know you have others that work with you and, and so, so I'll, I'll say that part, but, um, but thank you for the work that you do. And I know that it's, it's dangerous, Cornell. I know that you go into really dangerous situations um, with, without a gun and a vest. So I just want to thank you for all that you do because I know you do it because it's a passion. And, um, and I know some of the work that all of you do and, and I've met you all before, before I was here. Well, not you, Mr. Gilmer, I, I met you here. Mr. Jones, I met you at Sister Mary's event, Salt, Save a Life Today. And, but other than that, I worked with some of you in the community when I worked with Pittsburgh Public Schools and then, um, wireless neighborhoods, well, now Neighborhood Learning Alliance. Uh, anyway, um, so I'm curious like with the Office of Community Health and Safety, what their, I heard you say a little bit about what they do and how they're working with all of you. Are they riding along with police yet? Cause I mean, they've been paid now for about a year and I'm wondering what they're doing, but probably over a year now.
That part we do, uh, we don't, we're not in the mix of that at all, as far as I ride along with police or anything like that. What they're doing with us is, um, helping to give resources to the people that are victims, for people who aren't victims. We have a kid in the school that needs some type of support. They're, they're, we're getting resources for that.
Are you working with the school social workers or is there not a school social worker?
Um, they're school social workers, but you know, in addition to what the school social workers are doing, we have access where I meet with them every morning. And if the outreach worker says, um, you know, that's phone wise, we meet with them. If the outreach worker says, this is what we need, though, they start looking at, no, the, how do we get this?
Well, they were hired under the idea that they were going to be riding along with police officers. So that's what we were told. So I'm going to be honest with you about that. So I'm curious about what, when that changed, how that changed. And I want to say, I think some of them do, I, I know Laura does a lot of work in the communities, different things. Um, with homelessness. I know she does a lot in that area. I'm just curious about the social workers with the police officers at this point.
President, they're also helping assisting us with our trainings. Cause we go through a lot of trainings and they're helping us with everything from, of the bleed to, you know, the training support to make sure that we're getting the help to, the, the support to be able to do.
Stop the bleeding. Our paramedics could do that for free too.
Yeah, they're connecting with everything. They're, they're bringing that all together.
Okay. So I'm, I'm curious about the social workers still. So I'm just going to say that. They also, I'm curious about the relationship with the Pittsburgh Public Schools. I really think that part of what we need to do is have, and it's been something I've talked to the mayor about and other Reverend Burgess about. Is I think that it would be great to have a center, north, southeast, west and central. It's open twenty-four hours a day. So a kid or family can go there anytime they need help, no matter what time of day. But I think you have to make sure that it's a safe place for them to go. But then they should have some social workers and some mental health professionals there and some, some people that to help protect them. Because I'm, I'm afraid that kids don't have a place to go a lot of times and they're terrified. And so instead of going home, I see kids in Sheridan Park, I see them on the streets. And I mean, honestly, when I pull up, the kids are always very kind to me because they call, a lot of kids call me mom. But honest to goodness, it makes me worry that there, there's some little, little kids out so late at night. And I'm just thinking, somebody's got to care about these kids. And it would be nice if they had a place to go that they, you at least knew they were safe and not maybe being assaulted on the street or something else happened to them on the street. So I just, I really, I can't say enough how much I wish we would do something like that with the Stop the Violence Trust Fund or with anything else. And when it comes to the Stop the Violence Trust Fund, I want you to talk to me a little bit about the trust fund because there is a lot, and you can verify, there's a lot of concern and comments about this funding, how it's being used. Um, whether it's effective, uh, how it's being misspent, all sorts of, before it was even allocated, we heard, I've got a lot of phone calls, correct, Rev? You know, we did. So I'm just trying to think, if you could talk a little bit about to make us have some, at least give the public some awareness of what's happening and some assurance that it's going to be spent well and that you're, there'll be some follow-up to make sure that the groups are doing what they need to be doing with the funding.
Yes. Madam President, before I pitch it to Mr. Gilmore, so everyone that is getting, uh, money from the trust fund will be in an ecosystem.
Yes, Madam President, before I pitch it to Mr. Gilmore, so everyone that is getting money from the trust fund, we'll be in an ecosystem with them to help give them support, to help them get to capacity, whatever that capacity is. Additionally, some of the trainings will happen in this building on a monthly or bi-monthly basis to help give them what they need. That's, that's part of them joining by them saying, we're going to get, yes, thank you for this fund, you, and we will agree to be part of the, this ecosystem to help reduce violence in our city. So that's the first thing. The second thing, Mr. Gilmore can speak more specifically to.
Before he does, I want to, before he does, I just want to say, so I know that there are some groups that did not receive funding because they didn't have programs up and running, but some did receive money that didn't have funds, programs up and running. So I think, are you going to make that list public so that the community knows? Because we've heard before people asking about it, and who receives the funding? Are you going to make the list public?
Yes, eventually, Madam President, uh, once everyone decides and we all have convened, we're talking about it, we're talking about it, we, yes, we will.
It's public dollars, we have no choice, okay? I mean, I think that the public has a right to know. I know, I'm sorry, Mr. Gilmer.
Well, for, for sure, the money will be made, the allocations are definitely made publicly, you know, you've already seen the list, obviously, the council will have seen the list.
But let me just say too, you were sent an email saying that council agreed to the, the council hasn't agreed, we just didn't disagree because we weren't, we thought it was coming back to us, so it's not, but go ahead.
Well, yeah, you also have seen the list of actual wardies.
Saw the list, right.
Who's out there.
We didn't vote.
No, you didn't vote on the list, no, that's.
So I make sure people know.
Right, no, you, you, you agreed, the city council has shown the list of applicants and, and opportunity to, to weigh in on any of those that they did not think would be qualified to or appropriate to get any of the dollars, so unfortunately, no one was, no one was struck for the list, and that was great. We were very excited about that. We did go through a robust process to try to, I, I find the right applicants, but find the right recipients. And forty, forty organizations are going to be, will are the recipients, and they'll be there finishing their paperwork now, so they'll like to get their funds, half, well, half of them have already done that, and some of them, and their money has already been sent to them, and the other half is still, we're still working with them to get their, to the place where they can get their dollars. And the process of connecting, the process of incorporating them and introducing them and publicizing them is, is underway. It's just only beginning, we're at the very beginning of this.
Let me just say too, I think that a lot of times people don't understand that it looks like you're just giving the community groups money, and people are saying we're doing it for political purposes and on and on. But sometimes you're asking people to come to the table to volunteer and do things in the community and be a partner with you, and they see you getting paid or other people getting paid, and they're not. So I think it's, it, it may even just be a night, a symbolic measure, just to say, hey, we value you too. And so we're going to give you some funding, you know, towards this effort, but we want to make sure that you're doing things with the community. But do you think that's a fair assessment?
Well, this time, we did get applications for a total of about nine million dollars, and so we couldn't give everybody some money, but the next, the next round is going to be coming up in January, and more than welcome to apply, and as they, as their capacity grows, and they'll be, they'll be ready, they'll be able to get that money as well.
Yeah, I'm just trying to give you a chance to make the public feel better, and to me, so I'm trying to give you a way to, to make people understand how this process even works, because I'll be honest, there's a lot of people that don't. And I, myself included, was at first, I'm like, well, what are we paying people for? I mean, really, because I'm thinking, that's part of the problem, makes me so upset that somebody has to be paid to show that they care about kids getting shot. At the same time, there's people that are struggling, and, and I get it, and so they feel like they're trying to do their best in the community. And so that some of these organizations feel like they, they would like to see feel valued too, and so that, that's.
As time goes by, there more and more will be getting money, and will be incorporated into the plethora of organizations, the matrix, the mosaic, that's going to enable everyone in our city to have the protective factors they need.
Do you want to come to the mic? It's okay.
Okay.
It's okay with me.
Just real quick, just wanted to add a point. My name is Vaughn Rivers, supervisor, training coordinator for Reach. Um, I heard each, almost every one of the council members speak about the school piece and the vitality of it, and we know it's so, so important. Uh, we speak about the terminology of it being, excuse me, a disease, and understanding how we stop the transmission of this starts a lot sooner than what this grant calls for. Just to make it understood, this grant is targeted for us to work with a population of eighteen to thirty-four years old. And we felt ourselves being pulled as needs be, a lot more to the school space, to interject into the lives of younger children before it gets to the point of gun violence, hopefully. And so we understand that, um, we've had a lot of brainstorming conversations, meetings to do that, but just wanted to make it understood that this contract has us just targeted to work with eighteen to thirty-four year olds. And that makes it tough for us to then trans, transition a lot of that energy and work to this younger population that we know needs to be worked with, so that in five, 10 years, we're not having the same conversation. Just wanted to add, thank you.
Thank you for adding that, thank you. I think that's an important piece to me too, because I think I, I always say, why are we not telling kids that they never have to make that mistake? That they never have to go down that road, and empowering kids to not make those decisions where they're in the middle of fighting for their lives, and, um, and, and I mean, we can't forget that there's a lot of people, a lot of adults that are telling kids to go out and sell the sell the drugs and shoot this person and, and do whatever, so that the adult doesn't go to jail. And I think that, um, I think the more people understand like what the kids are really, I mean, can you imagine? I mean, it's just, it's really, it's just, it's shocking what the kids are living through, to be honest, it's just shocking. And so I want to do what we can do to help, but if I tough on people and I ask questions, I'm going to keep doing that. I'm going to keep asking questions, I'm going to keep demanding answers and responses. We want to see the numbers go down. We, we want to see them live a life that they deserve to live. To, for me, I think, one of the things I'm most concerned about with now is CYF, and I think that and what our kids are going through, and what we can, what will we play in all that? And I did hear that, is it true that the county might be reopening some Schuman Center or something similar to Schuman Center? I swear, I just heard that somewhere, and I'm just thinking.
Is RFP.
RFP is out, it's been closed, so it's, uh, they have to scale it, and it has to be bitted on. Um, so they're, they're saying, Madam President, that January twenty twenty-third, but I, I think realistically, it may be a little bit later on.
Okay.
Before they get it back up to running, and you know.
I hope somebody, I hope we're having conversations with them, you're having conversations.
Conversation.
About making sure it's ran in a way that kids are protected and not another place for kids to be abused.
Having those conversations.
Okay, okay, that's it for me, I'm sorry. I can go on about this subject, because I did, I did work within the schools, and you know, it to me, it's just, I don't know, it's shocking, but I also am gonna, I'm gonna be, I'm probably the tough, I'm probably the toughest, I think, on this subject, because I'm like, no, uh-uh. I'm not playing games, I want the kids to have real answers. They deserve that much. Okay, thank you, everyone.
One quick comment to your point, Vaughn, um, given that we know that many of the shooters are becoming younger and younger, as the adults are actually having the young people do the shootings, I don't want a contract to inhibit you from being able to do the work that you all need to do. Um, and so we need, if that is the case in any way, and we need to sort of amend that, I'm willing to work with Director Jones to be able to make changes necessary for you to do the work, um, because we do know many of the shooters are younger, younger. We do know many of the interventions that you all are participating in or occurring in younger children to stop them from aging and or stop them from getting involved and coming downtown, you know. So I just, in response to that, if we need to amend, I'm certainly willing to do.
So example of that is that, again, a year ago this time, we were at a table trying to pull and shape what this year would look like, and so we've learnt a lot over the year, and we will have recommendations, we're trying to partner with other entities, or partners realize, like, there was a, a request need of issues like in Northview Heights. So we have now partnering with, um, youth places, and we'll start an actual program this month there. Again, as an example to deter some of the traffic of, this is downtown. We're trying to also do a satellite piece at our site in Homewood, as well as the G Center. And so we, 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 we are assessing the pros and cons, the ins and outs of year one. And again, where our time has been initially, again, it was like, let's say hypothetically, ten percent towards school. We are now kind of at schools every day, we have, you know, seven schools and several workers in schools every day. That was not part of our initial shaping, so in spite of it not being in the formal contract, we are still following the need as a request. So again, hopefully, the goal is to get with Brother Jones and sit down and look at what was, how do we, what was, what was good in year one? What can we change, and how do we go into year two stronger and better, more visible, and how else can we help? That's kind of a plan and a template for January of twenty twenty-three.
To your point, you mentioned additional resources for youth athletics, essentially.
Not athletics, just, this, this youth in general, just programming.
Youth programming, um, well, we, we are working to identify additional resources to go into youth athletic programming. Um, and with Madam President's leadership, we've also been working for council to have additional resources for, for youth programming. So we are, we, we hear that, and we are working on it.
We actually put in, I think, about half a million, right? Almost half a million for the sports programs, and then we just got a grant from Dick's Sporting Goods for ninety thousand dollars for ten thousand per council district for athletic programs, but we put in money for athletic and community groups to help, because during the pandemic, we, I just want to say real quickly, during the pandemic, we know that those are the people that kept kids off the street for the most part, and so we, you know, we don't make it easier, we gave money to a lot of people when that ARPA fund came in. And so we took the money for the kids, for the athletic associations, because they deserve some of the money for all that they did to keep our kids off the street, um, and keep them in a safer place. And a lot of them did it without being able to do fundraising and all that sort of stuff, so I, I won't keep, keep talking about it, but I think this council was, is well aware of what, um, our athletic associations do for our communities. But we want to, we want to work with you, so just remember, when you're out there and you're doing things, there are also, there are two council members that care, but there are really nine, well, there's eight, and there will be a ninth council member that care. I want to be a partner with you and everything that you do across the city. We want to be able to help.
And Madam President, we will continue to keep you abreast. I will meet with you and every council person, uh, you guys are on, on the schedule, and we will continue to communicate.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I mean, I appreciate the meeting the other day, but I, as I said to you, I said, Cornell Jones, I know what he does. I, I see him, I know him, I know him in the community, people in the community know him, and so I'm, I have the highest respect, so I, I mean, it took a while, because I mean, at first I'm like, what the heck is this money? And I'm thinking, here we go, we're going to do all this stuff, no, nothing's ever going to change, the poor kids are still not going to have any, any real help. But then I see firsthand some of the things that you've done, so I want to thank you for that.
Please guys.
All of you, yeah. No, I know, I know they're all amazing, all amazing, all amazing, I know that, but now I want to see the numbers go down.
First of all, I want to uh, thank everyone for participating. Particularly, we want to thank David Jones for coming on board as our newest Assistant Director of Public Safety, who is now the face of the Plan for Peace and the base of our balance reduction strategies. Um, I want to thank, uh, Reverend Grayson, uh, my friend and my brother, and all the Reach team, like me and him, Russ, this is personal, right? It's, it's not political, it's not even policy, it's personal. Um, and so I want to, um, I'm grateful for members of council, for all of, and I do believe that, that we all care. I'll talk quickly, and then I'll, I'll let's go. I, I, again, my, maybe not quickly. Um, I'll try, I, I too preached yesterday, right? I thought I did all right.
He preaches every day.
I thought I did all right yesterday. There, 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 I think that what I have tried to do um, in my humble way, is understand this, and spend most of my time reading and trying to become a regional expert, not that I am, but at least understanding what the data and the research says, right? And so I wanted to, I've almost tempted to have another post agenda, because we've only talked about half of the work. There's really four kind of quadrants of the work. There is the, the, the outreach team that we're talked about, right? That's sort of the left quadrant, that's what we've been talking about, um, in, in the Plan for Peace, it's called community partnerships. We talked about that. Beneath that is policing, how they interact with policing, that's really the focus deterrent model. That's, that, that's two of those things. The, the third thing in, in the model that moves us a little bit also toward the, um, public health model is, is this personal supported, the person centered supports, which is all the therapy and the trauma-based stuff, the hospital-based programming, the social worker stuff. We've not talked about that quadrant as much today, but it's part of it, and it's absolutely necessary. And then the last thing is then this, um, this, this community um, economic transformation, whether it's boarding up houses or better lights, or better housing, or community, community building, right? Those are the sort of four quadrants of the work. What we are attempting to do as a city is to do something that is comprehensive and coordinated, that all four quadrants are being worked on at the same time in a coordinated fashion. And one of the reasons you give money to local community groups is not just to make them feel good, but to invite them to participate, so we now get their data, we now get their, their activity. We can track what they're doing on one hand, on the other hand, we can provide them with greater, as Mr. Jones talked about, we can give them greater capacity. So with these resources, a little bit of money we're giving them, we both get the information from them, because they require to give us what they're doing, but they also have to sign up for our training, so we can actually help them improve what they're doing. Last but not least, um, um, I'm the last, and I, I would recommend everybody read this, everybody who has not read this in the room, probably all of you have read it, but those who have not read it, the, the best sort of description of the work, at least the last and great, the most recent sort of book that talks about this is Thomas Appes' book called Bleeding Out. Uh, it's really, really, really helpful, I think, to understand, and he, he's gotten a lot of publicity. He's a lawyer by training, you know, out of J, John Jay School sort of thinking. And one of the things he talks about that's helped me think about this differently is he kind of puts a quadrant in the three quadrants, people, behavior, place. Right, 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 that, that, we're right, we are, we've talked mostly about people and behaviors tonight, but you also have to talk about the place that they're at. You know, we, we, we cannot, I don't want, I cannot let us leave this place to act like if we stop doing this work, there's a chance that these communities with no gas stations, and no grocery stores, and no food stores, and no sit-down restaurants, and no jobs, and vacant, vacant abandoned houses are ever going to get any way better. They're never going to get better if left up to their own devices. You asked me, I heard you, Anthony, the difference between when you and I were, were little is when you walked into Homewood in the nineteen seventies, there were grocery stores, there were drugstores, there were people working at the meals. In my neighborhood, there were people who were making a decent wage, and they had morals and values that they intercepted those kids. And you got spanked by me and the neighbor, because it wasn't just a concentrated poor community. Now, if I take you through Homewood, despite all of our work, it is a poor place where there's no, they, they are living in hell. They are living in chaos, right? Now, now, so we got these kids who are already living in hell before the pandemic. They were already, you know, um, we've done some walks with people. And I don't, I don't become so bad, but I've taken some walks with people who have said they have seen worse conditions in third world countries than exist in places in Homewood. There are places in third world countries that are better equipped than places in some of the districts I represent. It's sad, but it's true. So we have this really, really hurt people, already hurt, already messed up, and then we take COVID. We dump it on them, and what happens in COVID? Well, fifty percent of black businesses fail, so the few businesses they had in the community are now failing. Their parents lose their jobs, right? Some of them are first responders, they lose their job. And so we, and then we put them, the place, their home life is already difficult. The place where they got relief was school, right? That's where they left, they, Homewood and the place was safe place for them, school was their safe place. They got meals, they got teachers, they got social workers, and now we took two years, and we took them out of school, we left them in this pressure cooker. Right? And then all of a sudden, they leave this pressure cooker, having been on Facebook, having paid, and all this stuff, and now they're, whoo. And then we're wondering what happened. Well, we know what happened, right? All the numbers we're getting dealt with, been doing the right thing now. It's interesting, I learned this from the stock market, and I'll read what, what, what Appes says about, and then I'll stop. And this, like, I don't like my, my wife puts money in the stock market. I don't like the stock market, I like looking at my money in the bank, but I'm, I get overwhelmed, overwhelmed, right? My wife puts money in the stock market. My wife puts money in the stock market, right? You know what happens in the stock market? Some years it goes up. Some years it goes down. But if you look at the trend over ten years, you've been successful. I'm going to suggest to you, this work can't be judged in a year, in a week, in two years. It's, it's not, it doesn't work that way. You have to make a commitment to the work over decades and look back over, over decades and see where the trends are. But because, because again, it's going to be easy.
Kids wish they had decades.
But that's what he just said.
Okay, I'm just saying.
That's what he said. You, you the commitment to the work, at least for me, you know, for me, for me. You know, I started this work really in my call to preach, right? And I want to get faith based on you, but I have learned in my walk with God, in my work in the church. The success is not a question of what the outcome of my ministry was, it was my faithfulness to the work. In other words, that when I did the work, people were blessed. It wasn't how many kids went to Harvard, although I had kids out of my church and Homewood go to Harvard. Now, how many kids went to MIT? I have church kids out of my church that went to MIT. It was not how many kids got doctorates, not many, how many lawyers, not how many psychologists. In my little church in Homewood, we've had Ivy League students, we've had Ivy League graduates, we've had people become extremely successful in a little church in Homewood. And I did their homework, but it, it's not the number, it's the years of faithfulness that mattered, right? It didn't matter. It, it cause maybe the kid didn't go to Harvard, maybe the kid just didn't shoot himself that night. Right, right? That was just as successful, right, right? But that was just as successful as that kid who's now making six figures. That, that, that child that did that, that girl that did not have the baby by the older boy, because I told her she was somebody and maybe she's now working at Walmart. She didn't go to college, she's not a nurse, but she didn't have a child wi- without a, a, a man that would make her doom the poverty for the rest of her life. And now I'll, in, I'll, in my thinking is what App says in his book. He says this, that kind of persistence, I've talked about is key. I've argued in the book, rather than letting short term successes or failures dictate policy choices, he writes. Science supports setting a solid plan in motion and sticking with it. You've got to accept that there are going to be some bad times. If you're remarkably successful in your city and you reduce homicide by seventy five percent, you're still going to have a bunch of tragedies. There's still going to be every once in a while, a child, a child shock. And it will tear your heart out. So you have to find a way to have this blend of hope and resiliency, which is not easy. I have been trying to be part of this solution for fourteen years. We are today, today at the place where we, if we would stick with this for the next ten years, have the opportunity to see transformational change in the African American community and in poor communities in our city. I will not be on council in the next decade. I won't be here. I mean, I, hopefully I'll be around, right? You know, chasing my grandchildren, you know, eating some cookies and, and some chicken wings, right? I will not be on council. But I will say this to you, you have in your hands the most mature implementation of one of the best programs in the United States. If, if, if we, if we don't follow this route, and if we, if we don't, if we are strong enough, and I think the mayor is, we're strong enough to resist the, the knee jerk reaction of thinking that heavy, because remember, these are black and brown kids mostly. And I, I don't say, it, it kind of, I don't say anything. I try not to talk much. But the new shootings were happening these other areas. These kids aren't from those communities. The kids, the shootings on the South Side are not by kids who live in, they don't live in the South Side, right? They're not living in the South Side. They may have done, they, they shot some people on the South Side. They don't live there. The shootings are still happening by kids who live in black, brown, poor communities. We know who they look like. We know where they're looking at. Those places, those are the kids that are doing this crime. And so we got to create this comprehensive approach. Yes, we deal with them individually. Yes, we bring police, but we also give them the counseling, the family support stuff they need, and we also rebuild their communities. Because I believe I've tried to build some housing. And I don't talk so much about why I do it. I just do it, you know, and people say Rev likes to build houses. Why would he have houses? Because I absolutely know from my own life, you can't be what you ain't seen. And if I, if I make you, if I allow you to live in a place that's horrid and downcast and, and, and rats and rodents and, and poor and guttural, how are you going to ever view yourself as a child of God? How are you going to ever see the presence of God if your everyday, if your everyday life is utter despair? What I try to do, and I'm, I'm getting, I'm, I, I won't be along, so I can talk about what I really think. And I really think is this, people got to see God and they have to see his kingdom, but they can't see it unless we show them a physical presence, a physical manifestation of what God can do. And what I try to do in my work is try to show a physical manifestation, whether it's a house, whether it's an outreach worker, whether it's a counseling, whether it's right policing, so they can see it in themselves, say, oh, okay. Well, maybe God does care for me. Let me think about myself differently. Let me think about my activity differently. Because at the end of the day, at the end of the day, we can do all this work. If these kids don't see themselves differently, if they're still fatalistic, thinking they're going to die at thirty, if they don't see themselves differently, they don't see us differently, you know? None of this is going to work, right? None of this is going to work. My, my, my cousin who got shot and killed during a home invasion, you know, his, his mother, I don't tell this story. Almost, I think this made me the first time I talked about it publicly, trying to cry. His mother cried in the church and he was a teenage boy and said, Rev, he's out of control. Help me, help me. And I sat down with, with my cousin, he's my cousin. I saw him, right? You know, before he had his first body, he, he shot multiple people, he killed multiple people, I know. When I talked to him, he looked at me like I was, in the church, we sat, church was over, we sat in the sanctuary. I talked about God, he looked at me like I was crazy. I talked about doing the right thing, he looked at me like I was crazy. I said, son, if you don't stop this, if you don't stop this life, this work, you're going to die. He said, I'm going to die anyway. Only thing he said, he looked at me and says, I'm going to die anyway. Went to prison, came back from prison, two blocks from my church, got mad at somebody, did a home invasion, the person in the home invasion shot him dead. He in church had predicted his own future. He had chosen that day. I, I didn't know it then. I look back at it. And so my view is, okay, what do we do? So I couldn't save my kid. I couldn't save my cousin, right? I, I couldn't save him. I tried. Nothing I could do. But I've spent the, this was before I was a member of council. I very often talk about it. I have spent my life thinking that all these are our kids. What can we do to save all these kids, right? To, to show them, I couldn't do it in the church. If, if the church would have done it, I'd be in the church, I'd be in church twenty four seven. You wouldn't see me on council. I would have never came here. I'd be in my church right now. I left my church because I saw in him, I couldn't reach him in the church. I tried, I couldn't, I tried. I cried, I prayed, I prayed with him. I couldn't reach him in the church. So I came to council. I've tried to put these resources in the community because I know this is the only way to reach those kids, to give them a chance. Now, I am, I am, I'll stop talking, right? Because I'm, I'm, I'll get overwhelmed with emotion. But sometimes a lot of my work, I, I don't, I don't do any of my work for personality. I do all of the work because I've had these experiences in life, you know? I grew up in the hood. I'm, the only reason I'm not a drug, my cousins were drug dealers, my brother-in-law was a drug dealer, my family members, I grew up in the game. The only reason I'm not a drug dealer is because they said, Ricky, we don't want you in the game, right? I wanted to be. They had cars and money and women. I had no car, no money, no women, you know, they, I, I wanted, I wanted some of that. They said, you're smart. You can't, we're not going to let you. We're not going to let you. I, I saw the bricks in my, I'm not, I'll never talk about this. I was in the house, saw the bricks. I'm not talking about something I heard. I saw bricks. I saw the money. I saw the, I saw the game. And they said, we're not, we're not going to let you. Last thing to this, and I have a, a drug dealer cousin. What he used to do is he'd come to church, he died too. He used to come to my church and put a hundred dollars in my Bible when I wasn't there. He'd go in the pulpit Bible and he'd take a hundred dollars and he'd hide it in the Bible, right? I didn't, my church, he would come, they'd let him in. He's my cousin, they let him in. They knew who he was. He'd come in, he'd hide, he'd hide a hundred, right? I, I tried to talk to him out of life. I couldn't get him out of life, right? He'd put a hundred in the Bible that blessed, I, I went to, I give it to the church. But it, it was in him to do right. He just couldn't get there. And the church, he wanted to, but he just couldn't get there. I couldn't get him through the church. I'm hopeful. I am more hopeful, and I, I strive to, and I, I, my, I am more hopeful today. We are putting the resources, we are putting the commitment, we have a mayor who's committed to this. This is our time to do this work in a comprehensive way that's transformational and historic. And I, and I, I won't see the end, but I've been here, God has let me. I'm like Moses, right? I'm like Moses. I, I didn't get in the promised land, but he took me to the mountaintop and I've seen, I've seen the promised land. I've seen what we're about to become and I'm grateful to have been a witness of what God has done.
I'm going to get the basket and pass it around. I'm telling.
All right.
Boy, we're very close out a minute. Uh, there, there, so thank you all. My name is Jason Rivers and also a part of the Reach team and lifelong resident of Pittsburgh. Worked for Pittsburgh Public School for years. And I just wanted to, there, there were some points that were raised that I think are worth conversation, especially knowing that there's, you know, a larger society that's watching this. And, and there was the ask around what are some of the needs and, and something in my short time being a part of the Reach team, which there are amazing men and women that love our city and love our communities doing that work. Something that I've seen and observed and sensitive to just around trauma, even in my time before the team, is just a space for, because the team members are also first responders to a lot of things that's going on and, you know, have come with their own experiences around trauma and the impact on their lives. But something for them to have in a relationship for decompressing. Because, you know, not only in what they're dealing with, but as they deal with those, you know, new families, new situations, it's, it's a lot. And I see that so, you know, from my own brother, but, but from all the members. So that decompression is important. And I also think that, you know, education, like the education for all of us around understanding violence and its impact on us as a society, right? You know, we go back and forth and I hear the term, the disease, you know, used often. And I think, and I think in order to concede to that, which I, which I support the work that's being done and the way that we talk about it, I think we also have to acknowledge and understand that it's a, it's part of an American problem, right? It's because I think what we need to be clear on is that we're not, yes, the language that's used as we talk about violence. Because very easily and unintentionally, we can get to a place that says black and brown people are just violent people innately. And that's not what we're saying. And I think the language that we use to talk about it is very, it, it behooves us to educate all of ourselves and understand it at the deep level. And so I think in that understanding, our cities and residents, and when we see these behaviors and outbursts, it's the most vulnerable amongst us. And when we think about our citizens that are under pressure, I was at a community meeting yesterday on behalf of the work. And there was a father who told his story and talked about losing three children, three of his sons, right? And over a course of time and his impact in the work. So I just think that when we talk about trauma and trauma on top of trauma and the pressure and what the father said that I think is important is, you know, the fear that a lot of our young people live with, the stress that a lot of our young people live with in a lot of communities. And so when we humanize the work, we understand the work differently. And so I know those around the table don't look at it this way, but because larger society is watching, I think it's really critical that when we talk about that disease, then, and, and Councilman Lavelle, you talked about root causes, you talked about the history. And I think that's super important to understand that it's not a today thing, right? It's, it's a historical thing that created ripe conditions for these behaviors to occur. And I think that collective effort is one that this group is doing a great job of intervening on and there's more work to be done. So two, two final points, I think, a cross functional approach and Councilman Burgess, you spoke about that. But I think it's so important where, you know, there's more time and energy where those that are doing the work real time, because I see them as experts. Like those doing the work on the ground or they carry an expertise with them and learning from community. And how rich is that if there's opportunity for cross functional work between organizations, leaders of systems to talk about how we resolve this challenge? The other thing that I think is important that I heard a lot about is, you know, the voice for those that are directly impacted. Like somewhere they have to be, you know, included in this process of solution because they are the leaders and protectors of their spaces. And our community, our city is just full of brilliant individuals, some misguided and some that have lost hope, but this work is really about doing that. So, and I appreciate what you said around, you know, it's just not going to be solved today, but we have to make a commitment to it. So respect for that. And, you know, also the council president in relationship to those hard questions asked. I think they're critical because they will help us bring out the best and because one life lost is too many lives lost. And that's the way that, you know, those that are doing the work operate. So we appreciate those pushes. And I think those are important for us to get to the critical place to improve our city.
So I think we've had a great conversation. I wanted to thank again Dr. Jones, David Jones, and he is, I'm back to the church world, right? David Jones and to all the outreach workers, they've been in this world as long as I've been in this world, right? And so we're grateful, grateful for the parts. I'm grateful for council because, because council has funded this. And when we say this again, the mayor of Pittsburgh has not funded this. This work has been funded by the members of city council. And I'm very proud to be a part of council because this work would only occur because of the, of the leadership of Councilwoman Smith and the partnerships that council has adopted and working together, Council Lavelle and others that council has, has, has created the Stop the Violence Fund. And council has decided this funding is important.
I'm just going to end it if you don't mind. I just want to say thank you for your work and thank you for Councilman Lavelle for his work. And I think that sometimes like we're getting a lot of text messages from people asking, how can they be a part of things? How can they get contracts? How can they do things? I think people, sometimes when you get a lot of negativity, it's because people want to be a part of it. So I think, you know, helping people become engaged in the process is really important. But I want to thank you for the work that you're doing. I fight with him all the time. But I know that his heart is, it, it really wants to do what's right for the community. So sometimes I tolerate him a little bit more than I should. Just kidding. But I want to seriously want to thank you because I think you have such a, a knowledge about all this. But I think let's figure out ways to engage the people that want to be involved even further. That's all.
That's all.
I just have a quick, I just, I don't want long drawn out answers or anything like that, but I just wanted to address one thing. First of all, thank you, Councilman Lavelle, Council President, for your leadership on this, okay? You, I know you're very passionate about this. I happen to think the most effective means of getting to children, young people, adults as well, is through faith. That's why this guy down here does one bang up job and, you know, speaking about and talking to people. And my question is this, are you prohibited? You all seem like you're a man of faith to me. And I think it plays a vital role in any upbringing of any child in direction. Are you prohibited from not using a faith based platform? Or do we use a faith based platform?
So part of the GVI model in which we partner with is eighth and blue, which was, it's just the next tier of tying, tying in. In terms of, of our work individually, we, we do our work. It is a contract. We can't profitize and say, you know, you can say, but there's different ways of reaching people. And I think we do that every day.
Right.
Values and morals. And again, everyone where we who's at the table pours in, we, we pour into the lives we can't come into contact with and try to help them become more.
Yep, that's good to know. So yes, you do speak about faith and to, about God to these kids. That's important for me to know. I'm very familiar with this gentleman next to me and his story. And I think people who've lived a lot, lived it are the best people to be out there speaking and teaching about it. So thank you all for, for all you do. You have my confidence.
I think we're good. And so I need a motion to adjourn. Move on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your adjourn. Your adjourn.